Give me uno momento. Give me one minute.
We'd like to welcome everybody to this evening, April 22nd Board of Education meeting that is remotely done, conducted through Zoom. This meeting is being done in the interest of the COVID-19 regulations to make sure safety, security, and health of all are maintained. Unfortunately, we will not have a public comment session tonight, but if the public has any comments, please send them to the superintendent. You can find that address on the website, and we will get back to you within 24 hours of your questions. Uh, this is the remote meeting of the Board of Education in the current time, and will continue this way until we are released from our stay-at-home orders and working remotely. So at this time, to start the Board of Education meeting, I'd like to turn it over to President Pam Stoller.
Thank you, Dr. Douglas. Good evening, everyone. Uh, one logistical thing for all of us in attendance is, uh, remember that you can use the space bar to unmute yourself prior to speaking, and when we start to voting, if you could raise your hands, that would be helpful. So let's get started. Both Tom and I have, uh, flags, so if you could join us for the pledge, that would be great. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
Okay. I.
America.
And then to the public. For with the same. One nation.
Under God.
God.
Is visible.
With liberty.
And justice.
For all.
Thank you, everyone. All right, I'm gonna be going between both devices here, so, um, uh, we will move right on to, uh, item two. We have minutes from the March 19th meeting. I'm kind of, I don't, not seeing any.
They're in there, Pam. If, if you click on the, the item, um, it will have a link under that says view minutes.
Yep, I'm not seeing any. Clicking on it and that's, it's not moving.
They're in there.
So, um, I need a motion.
So.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Can you pose nay? Any abstentions? All right, we'll move on to the community comment and question period. I don't believe we have any live community members in attendance this evening. Uh, if we did, we would ask that they state their name and address prior to speaking. So we will move right on to, uh, our student representative report. Taylor.
Hi, everyone. It's good to see you all. Uh, obviously, I don't have much to report for you. Um, I spoke with Dr. Douglas and Mrs. Earl earlier last week, and they kind of talked with me, updated me on how things were going. Um, the consensus among students, you know, everyone's bummed, they wanna, you know, be in school, especially seniors want those moments that they've been waiting for, I can speak for them, but, uh, everyone understands that we have to do it and why, and I appreciate the standards that you guys have set. All my teachers are doing really well. Uh, some of my club student council, we have a Microsoft Teams account now, and Mrs. Doran is suggesting some ways we can work for, to honor teachers on Teacher Appreciation Day and stuff that we can do outside of school.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, on to item five, presentations.
Yep, these, these presentations are more just oral discussions. Um, under item 5.01 is the administrative BOSI's budget, and what happens is, we have to take action upon that to, this evening. Uh, they have kept their administrative budget flat, uh, through a tremendous amount of interest savings that they are calculating, uh, in their budget, so that will be a one-time thing, and then the budget, I think, will be corrected next year. Uh, we did have some questions, which BOSI's was able to get with Katie and talk about, so Katie, do you wanna update? It, basically updating the board on the fact they were made able to make almost $800,000 in interest savings from one budget year to the next, and we just wanted to give you the update of how they ended up doing it, 'cause if we could do it, we would. Katie?
Sure. Um, yep, so I spoke with Greg Dale, who's the Assistant Superintendent for Finance at GST BOSI's, um, and asked him, um, about the, the decrease that we saw in the interest expense from what was presented to the district in January, uh, to what was presented to us in April, um, with their attempt to help districts out and, and flatten the administrative budget. And essentially, what had happened was, um, back in 1819, um, BOSI's was changing their, their cash flow model and how they're going to borrow, um, where typically, they would bill all school districts in June for the, the entire amount of the BOSI's bill, um, which require them to do a couple borrowing throughout the year for their own cash flow purposes. Um, they've changed that model now, so districts start paying their BOSI's bill monthly, starting in January, uh, so they're able to cut their borrowings for cash flow down to one per year. Um, in an effort to be conservative, to make sure this model was going to work, they had maintained the interest for two borrowings within their budget, um, to make sure that this was going to work. Um, it is working, they are able to make a further reduction to their, to the budget. We'll see an increase to our BOSI's refund this year, um, for the, the excess interest paid in 1920. So going forward, now that, um, BOSI's is comfortable with how, um, their cash flow model is working, we should see this as a, a constant going forward, um, in their, in their budget, you know, not barring any change.
Literally no increase from before.
Any questions on that item? Okay, then we'll move on to, uh, 2021 budget discussion.
This is sort of a tag team between Katie and I. Um, since our last budget discussion, you saw where the, the budget was at. We really are in a status of a holding point, and the main reason that we're in a holding point is because we're unsure of what our final aid is going to be. We know what our initial aid from the state is going to be, but we have been warned that, uh, due to the pandemic and what's going on, we are facing potential reductions in our, our revenue stream, which we only really have two major revenue streams, one is state aid and one is local. Uh, and because that state aid is potentially in jeopardy, we don't know how much, but we do know that the first time that they will attempt to readjust the budget is April 30th, and then, uh, again on June 30th, and then again on December 31st, and then last on March 31st. We can't, school districts can't operate very easily on that way. Once we set a budget, that's where we have to be, so this is a precarious time, so we thought we'd kind of have some discussions around the, the tax levy and the tax rate. We know that at the last meeting, uh, right now, our projected tax levy at the 2% cap, which the governor says really is where we should be at, would mean a tax levy increase of 6.76%, and we do have what that would correspond in roughly a tax rate of about, I believe it's like 3.58% tax rate, which in dollar amounts, most conservative estimate would be on a $100,000 home of around $68 per 100,000. That's virtually the same exact calculation that we would have had even last year under the budget that we proposed. Uh, so what happens is value of the district has gone up, and rates have generally went down. Now, that's on the high side. If everything goes along the way that it has in the past, which we project that it will continue to do this year with growth in the district and assessment values and the assessment equalization rates, the lower end could be somewhere around, I believe, $24 per 100,000. So depending between now and August, that's what sets that rate, and that's really what people are voting on. It, we, we would estimate conservatively that it would be between, somewhere between $24 per 100,000 to $64 per 100,000 with the approval of the budget as it stands right now. Uh, now, that doesn't mean that the state's still gonna take money away. The problem is, is whatever they take away, we have to either make up or we have to reduce. And even right now, we have some reductions still to do, so the more either we don't raise on the local side, or the more that gets taken away on the state side, we have to adjust the budget one way or another, and we only get one shot to do that once our budget's approved. So just be aware of that. We have several scenarios, but I want to turn it over to Katie, 'cause she has more of the finite numbers in that, that rough range and can tell you, but we do have some options, we just wanna know what the board's thinking, because at the end, we'll tell you what the dramatic impact impacts will have, just if we went out like at zero, what we would have to do, what if they did a 20% reduction in state aid, uh, 10% reduction, we, we can do those numbers rather easily right now. So Katie, take it away. And Katie may have to share her screen at times, so, um, let me just make sure you can share a screen if you need to.
Sorry, just bear with me one.
Okay, now you can share if you needed to.
I just need a second, I, I somehow lost everything.
President Stoller, can I raise a point of clarification?
Certainly.
Were we supposed to vote on the BOSI's budget and the BOSI's board tonight?
Yes, that will be later in 10.04, I think it is.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Okay, sorry about that. So Tom, just to clarify, I'm flowing in the way you want me to go, you want me to talk about some of the options with, with the tax cap?
If you could, do you have the screen over the history of the tax levy and the rates?
I do, hold on one sec.
And just for the public, if by chance we share the screen, everybody else is still there, we're just showing you what Katie's going to put up, and then we will bring everybody else back. Do you want me to do it, Katie?
I got it. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay, can everyone see the, the PowerPoint slide?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, so we, this is a slide you've seen in the past, um, we've added a couple additional columns to clarify the point we wanna make about the history of the district's levy versus the tax rate. Um, so we've, we've talked, you know, many times, uh, over the course of budget development, that our rate continues to, you know, maintain in that, in that $17, $18, $19 range, we've been very consistent with our rate. Uh, the last two columns that we recently added actually shows you the, the cents change on the rate and what that means for an assessment on a $100,000 home. So you can see over the years, you know, we've had some, you know, significant decreases and, you know, had some of the increases, but they've, they've equaled themselves out throughout the years. Um, so looking at, um, our tax cap calculation for this year, and given how consistent our trends have been over the past, we, we believe we'll still fall within this, the same trend that we've continued to see. Does anyone have any questions on this, on this particular slide?
See, and if I can point out to the board, like, if you look at 2019, 20, we had a levy change that we went out to, out to the public with 3.97. But we actually communicated that our rate would probably be around 2 point, I think it was 2.9 something roughly, but when we actually got to the final rate, it ultimately went from 2.9 down to 0.34%. And that 2.9, uh, would have been somewhere around $58, $59. So we went out and told the public at the most conservative, it would be $58, $59 per 100,000, and the, the budget passed at, I think, 73% approval. Not knowing that in August, when we sent out the tax bills, the actual true impact of that vote, because we're really voting on a spending plan, was only $6 per 100,000. And we took 50% of the money, or 2 point, I think it was 2.2 million dollars off the table, which if we left it on, it would only been roughly $12 per 100,000, and we would have a stronger budget position and remove, we would have been able to remove ourselves from either our fund balance or add to our health insurance, which we know we're going to have to do. That's why anything in our spending plan right now is critical, because the out years will be detrimentally affected. So just be aware of that. The long case history is that even if, right now, on our low projection, back in 2003, 2004, we believe that if everything works hypothetically the way that we think it has been working, with the estimates that we've tried to be conservative on, we would still be below or right, right around 1830 at the most. Um, so that's a pretty long-running record of over 17 years of being at that same tax untrue. Most districts can't do it, and when you compare us against all the other districts, we're anywhere from $3 per, per thousand to, um, almost $6 or $7 per thousand under all of our main districts that we compete against directly in this area, Elmira, Elmira Heights, and Corning. So that just gives you an understanding for your discussions. Okay, Katie? So the question, the question both Katie and I have, because once we know how much we're going to potentially, or may lose from the state, right now, we just don't know how to cut, so we can't really develop that budget. Plus, we don't even know when the budget vote's going to be yet, uh, and all the timelines. So we're taking a cautious approach, but we wanna have some feedback from the board. What do we do? Um, and, and here's one of the examples. If by chance, I'm just going to give you the worst case right now. If by chance, the board said, hey, we need to go out at zero. If we went out at zero, we currently have a budget gap of 2.413 that we have to cover. If we went out at zero, that budget gap goes to 4.83 million dollars, and that's without any loss of state aid. If by chance, the governor does, like, say he follows through and it's 20% aid cut, 10% aid cut for us is roughly almost about $3 million. So if he goes out at 20, we're looking at 4.4 plus almost another six or a $10 million gap. I think you all know, that would be absolutely eviscerating everything we do in education. I think that's one of the reasons why the governor's putting a, a play out at the federal level, because we, we are going to need help. If you are helping, um, small businesses, you are helping large businesses, you are helping, uh, hospitals, healthcare, first responders, people know what teachers are now, and especially when it's being done in their home instead of in the schools, where they really would prefer their children, that we would hope in this next round, they are going to have to be committed to helping those hit hardest. Not every state, but proportionally, those that have been hit hardest by the pandemic. So that's just that. If you went to the middle ground, just so that you know, uh, the middle ground 676, say, is right around 3, 376, we would have a 2.413 or a 2,400,000 gap right now that we'd have to cover. We would also have to cover another million dollars roughly to cut out of that, so we're at 3.4, and again, that's without any other reductions from the state. And the one thing I forgot to tell you is, we already have to make up at least $580,000 next year already, because they actually took that away from us in aid this year. So we're getting some help, but it's going to go away next year, so when you add that to it, you're looking at at least almost $4 million, and that's without anything from the government. So when you get all the way up to the full amount of 6.76, we still have that 2.4 million dollar gap, that's our fund balance, 'cause we do have some tools, but not a lot. Uh, if we went out at the full 6.76 and it was approved, we would have a surplus in the budget if we used our fund balance of about $215,000. And now people would say, why would you do that and have extra money left over? And remember, we're not adding anything to the budget. Even all those things we said about adding, those aren't even included yet. So we would propose, we're not including any of it, but we would have that 215,000, well, what that does is takes half, roughly almost half of the money that is still coming in, but potentially won't be there next year, so we filled half the hole, and next year, we're gonna have to cut, instead of 200, 580, we're probably going to have to cut somewhere around 300 instead. So we're trying to put it in the best financial management plan, and those numbers are even still without any future cuts by the governor. So that's how dire this is. We have two revenue sources, and we know the only revenue source that i- is going to be there is our local, 'cause the state is pulling back its funding. I don't know where the community would feel, I don't know where the board will feel. I can only give you, and Katie can only give you, our best projections of how to be as financially salvid and prudent going forward for the long haul, but ultimately, if the board tells us, we want it at 3%, we want it at zero, we're gonna do whatever we have to do to get to those numbers. Katie, other things?
Um, no, just, um, you know, thinking ahead of what the, the budget picture could look like for next year, um, you know, as Dr. Douglas mentioned, there was a, a shift of state aid dollars being replaced with federal dollars. Um, so the state, you know, just to, um, make us flat with our aid for next year, it has a, quite a bit of chunk of money to put back into the budget, and that's not on top of any other increase that we, we typically see. So we could be looking at, you know, another year, another two years of, of flat foundation aid, um, until the state is able to right the ship with their own revenue sources. Um, so, given, you know, it's a precarious, um, situations we could find ourselves in, in the future, um, you know, look carefully at the options that we have before us now and how to best utilize them.
Yeah. In, in other words, one of the things Katie's talking about, you remember those three nasty letters, G-E-A, from the recession of 2009? This federal stimulus, they did the same exact way as the G-E-A. They put it in and then pulled it out, and then next year, they'll say, oh, we're giving you 500,000, well, they're giving us the money they already pulled out, and then they aren't gonna increase us again. And last time, it took six years for them to get off of it. We, we feel that they're probably going to do the same year over year for the next couple of years. So we'll open up that to the board for any discussions and guidance for us, uh, because once they set a time and a date, we're going to have to move relatively quickly.
Questions or comments?
Uh, this is Doug Johnson. Um, I, I don't think we can get anywhere near a 6.7% tax levy limit, uh, with the current situation in the economy and people losing jobs and unemployment going up like it is. Um, I'm not sure what the right number is exactly, but I guess I'd be interested in knowing kind of what a 2% uh, increase to, to levy would look like and what the gap would be.
2% gap would be 2.4, 1.6, so that's $4 million plus 580, that's 4.5, 4.6 million, and whatever else the governor takes.
Okay.
I have a whole chart, if you tell me, I can tell you.
Yeah. Um, I, I think my comfort level is gonna be more in that 2% range, um, in terms of what the public thinks of what the tax levy limit is, and, um, not, not appearing and not doing more in terms of a tax levy limit, um, well, basically, doing what we can for local taxpayers, um, in the crisis.
Well, that at 2%, you're going to most likely, on the low end, give them a tax reduction, but you're going to be cutting a massive amount of staff and program. I, I'm going to at least be blunt and straightforward, that's what's going to have to happen, uh, just so you know, and that's what we need to balance for our community, and I'm not fighting one way or another, I just, I hope you understand, I'm only responding so you know the implications, 'cause once we settle and we do this, that's going to be the only way we can balance the budget.
Well, we have reserves that would, we could plug holes in, I mean, we can cut, or we have reserves available to us, I believe.
Right, so once we have direction from the board, you know, all those tools are, will be looked at.
Christine?
I think, um, this year more than, I mean, and, and every year, this is important, but this year even more so, is just make sure that, you know, and, and Sue always does a great job with this communication, but, so people understand that, you know, just because we're going out with a certain number, uh, tax levy doesn't necessarily equate to that's what the tax increase is gonna be, so, um, I, and I, and I think that communication's just gonna be more important than ever, because I, I do feel like we are gonna have to go out at a larger number, um, and, you know, and then hopefully, it'll, it'll be much lower than what, than what we, um, go out with, but, um, we're just gonna have to really drive home that, that communication.
Yeah. And, and that is a good thing, Sue's been working on that for really the past two years, we've been getting people aware of it. Um, even when we went out at 4% last year, just about, that was one of the things they, um, they did say on the exit survey, they did understand the difference between the rate, uh, and the levy. I think, you know, no matter what, we even say, this meets the 2% mark. No matter what we put out, we're going to say, this is either at or below the 2% mark. So I think all those are important things. Um, it, it's just hard one way or another. I mean, even at the upper level, um, we have a couple tools, maybe with debt service, to bring down the number, but still get the same spending. So we have some tools in ours to try to lower that levy number, and we would certainly try to use them, but the hard part is, is our balance has to be, anytime we do something this year, even if we lower it and lower taxes, remember, it compounds every single year. Uh, that's, that's just the warning that we have to. I know there's some schools that are going out at zero. If they get a cut, I do not know how they'll make it through a second year, because they don't have that many reserves. And remember, we do have reserves, but we can't just throw all the reserves at it, too. We're already throwing 2.8 million at the budget itself. So others?
I believe we have to be on the higher end, because if we're not, $10 million in cuts just decimates the program. So it's kind of, I don't know, we're, we're forestalling it by one year. If we go out low and then make all the cuts next year, um, I mean, I wasn't sitting on the board when they made all those cuts in the Great Recession, so people that were there then maybe could think about how that was, I don't know. Um, plus, do we have any sense, I asked this question, um, earlier, is the governor going to allow us for whatever we didn't spend this budget year? Um, can we carry that into next year and spend it? 'Cause normally, we have to put it in untouchable reserves, or we can't exceed that 4% limit. I know Katie talked about being on some webinars where people had different opinions in regards to that.
What I would say, Warren, is we're gonna use anything, any tools that we have to try to make this as least impactful as possible, but you're absolutely right, we're not supposed to be over the four, but as long as the board's okay with it, we will be over the four, uh, just because of the fact it's the only way we're gonna be able to try to move some money from one year to the next. It's just like in the past, we've done, we've tried to It's just like in the past, we've done, we've tried to do as much pre-buying as possible. If we have money left over to try to create, like in other words, you pre-buy now. And that means at least it may have been money in the budget, but now it's not there the next year. And you help fill that hole, so to speak. So yes, we would be looking at those avenues as long as the board would support us because the worst thing a comptroller can say is we kept too much money. But we can say, yeah, we kept too much money to apply it to the next year.
Katie, did you have another comment?
No, I mean, I pretty much echo what Dr. Douglas said. You know, while I, you know, respect the comptroller's opinion, these are, you know, unprecedented waters with the with the pandemic. And if going over the four percent will protect the district going forward in some capacity, that would be our response if we were cited in an audit.
I'd support you.
Thank you.
And I think the comptroller has been a little more reasonable right now. The human side of everybody starts to come out when they understand this, too. Even even the even the ones that have to count the beans from one pile to another and make sure the same beans are in one pile that was in the other.
Any other comments from anyone? Dan?
Yeah, I I don't know the exact number that's right, but I tend to agree that I think the higher end is where we need to be because of the you know, otherwise would force us to, as I understand the discussion, and when we get more specifics, it'll be helpful. But if the if it's if it's either that or make just deep cuts in our educational program, I'd rather take a run at trying to raise enough revenue to maintain our program because I think that's critical. And I think if the public understands why we're going on to the number we are in order to maintain the education that they expect for the district, then hopefully they'd support that. So I'd I'd rather, I mean, this other kind of issue of if the state cuts us by twenty percent, that's that's nothing, I don't, you know, we can't address that, I think, through the the tax levy. That's just a whole separate issue. But so maybe it's four, maybe it's five, somewhere around there. But I think I'm on the higher end because I I don't want to see us have to make significant cuts to the educational program.
Anyone else?
So just to be clear, I wanna, I'm not advocating for cuts at this at this point. I'm suggesting we use more of our reserves to to plug up the hole. And but cuts may be, you know, unavoidable in the future.
Okay, thank you, Doug.
Sheila, Tyler, Christine, Mary Ann?
I have a question. So like if we go up at the higher end, how much will that cost the taxpayers here?
Well, roughly, if you are at the maximum end, six point seven six. Right now, everything goes by our tax on true or tax on a thousand, so it's equal for anybody. And what the estimate on the most conservative side, we don't take like the riskiest approach. We take what we believe the maximum number would be. I believe that is roughly sixty eight dollars per hundred thousand. Katie?
Sixty four?
Sixty four for a hundred thousand. So if you own a hundred hundred thousand dollar home, it's sixty four dollars. Now, on the lower side, which we know our maximum has always been the most conservative. And like last year, it was fifty eight, I think it was fifty eight. And when we actually got to it, it turned out to be six because the value of the district's going up. And we already know that that's happening this year. No matter what, come August, we know that the value will keep the trends that we saw in that chart that we showed you. How much? We can't predict. Our conservative estimate there is somewhere around, what was it, twenty four dollars per hundred thousand? Which we have a strong sense that it would be much more there in line. And if the district has more assessed value, which is usually the case, we feel it will probably be below that, but we would be wrong in trying to estimate the lowest number and then it not turn out there. So we think the range right now conservatively would be between twenty four dollars and sixty four. With the with the high probability that it's going to be very close to the twenty four dollars. And then, once we get to August and they approve the tax assessment, we think it would probably even still be lower than twenty four dollars. How much? We don't know.
Thank you. Mary Ann, Tyler, anything you want to add?
I would just hate to see us. I know it's, you know, times are hard, but I would hate to see programs be cut. I would rather go on the higher end. I think, you know, what I heard Dan say made a lot of sense to me.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Tyler?
I agree with going on the higher end to make sure that we don't cut as much program as we have to.
Okay, thank you.
Pam, your thoughts?
Yeah, the only thing I'll add is I agree with Dan. I don't know what that number is at this point in time. I think we have to go to the higher end. But to address Warren's earlier point, having been on the board, I wish Brian were here in two thousand and nine. None of those actions are ever taken lightly. We used every knob we had, every lever we had to do what we had to do, and we still had to take those actions. So I think when the information becomes clearer, we'll have a better idea of what our local situation looks like, where are we relative to people coming back to work? You know, anything around the the local, the state, the national economy. We kind of need all that information to make the right decision. And I it's a little bit circular because I'm sure that's what the governor is trying to do, too, right? Is understand what that overall picture is going to look like and trying to make that decision with the best possible inputs that he can. And we're just going to have to do the same thing.
And I think that that is true. I mean, the governor, I think right now they've requested seventeen billion dollars. Say he gets seventeen billion dollars. What does that mean? I don't, I don't know. Does it mean he replaces the federal money so that we actually get the budget we were intending to? Because they adjusted the budget based on what they knew at the time. Say he only gets twelve million dollars, twelve billion dollars. But that's enough because he didn't really need seventeen. Until we get that clearer picture, we don't, we just don't know. I don't believe that picture will be clearer until June, July on that front, just because I think that's going to be a battle on the next one. It's not going to be we've got to do it, even though, you know, from every indication, the president has said that he's absolutely for it. The senators on both sides have said they're for it. But it will come all in the sticking points of how much, who gets what and everything else. And I think that next one, which is probably going to be the last one, if from what they're talking about, will be the hardest discussion, and it will be the hardest mountain for them to climb.
And that money all has to come from someone, somewhere.
Yeah.
Taxpayers. So they're getting hit locally. They're getting hit at the state, and they're getting hit at the federal. So we we've just got to think about it.
Right. So that helps us will know. I did, and Doug, I'll get right to you. I did talk to Brian just because he called me and said he might be out. So I did give him those scenarios, too. I think he's in general consensus where most of the board members were. And Doug, just so that you know, we do understand about using the reserves. We would try to use that as well. I just don't know how much tools we would have because we may have to use the reserves as a backup for the cuts from the state afterwards. So because once we have a budget, that's the only way we're going to be able to fill the hole, or we're going to have mid-year cuts like back in nineteen ninety two. So we have to make sure we have tools for all of those. So we're not against that. It's just we're 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 trying to make sure that we have the path to go forward, whether it's this year, next year, or the year after that, or at least the options to. So.
Yeah, what I was just going to say is what I'm concerned about is going out on the high end. And we've got, you're saying some districts are going to go out at zero percent. Some might go to slightly, you know, some increase.
Some are going out at four.
Okay. I mean, if we're kind of sticking out like a sore thumb in terms of the high end in, you know, highest in the region, I think that's gonna help bring in the no votes. And we only have two shots at this thing. If we if we go out with a high end number and we don't pass it, then I think we're looking at a July revote where people are going to be gone. I think that's going to further suppress voter turnout. And then then the no vote has an easier hurdle to climb if they want to shoot down the budget. And then and then we're stuck at a zero for next year. So I I guess I'm just I I think that a more moderate approach might might be more useful for the two percent or two and a half or three, whatever goes down. Then then we're a little closer to what the public wants than than not in that scenario.
All right, so more to come as we, as the picture becomes clear.
Oh, just so the board knows, we may have to call one or two special board meetings in May just because of this situation. We just don't know. Our next board meeting is not until is it May eighteenth or May twentieth or something right in there? So depending, one of the things, Doug, just so that you know, on our call today, they are trying to target, I believe, June ninth for the board. But statutorily, they have to do that second vote before July one. So supposedly, they're going to re redo things because remember, starting July one, we have no money. Unless we start getting our aid. So then we have to use the reserves until we get there or do a ban. So we're waiting. I mean, we're hoping that next week they're going to give us some guidelines on this. Jim's been our point person at BOCs. And this is one of the things they just they just are spinning their wheels about this. There is no, there is no stomach for letting the board just approve their budget. Which I I will tell you, some people have been advocating for because honestly, a lot of people aren't going to come out to vote in the first place. It will have to be, a lot of people request absentee ballots. They can't even ask us to mail absentee ballots to everybody because financially that would be thirty two thousand ballots potentially. Now, just imagine in New York City, if they have to send that many ballots out. So if they aren't going to do it for one, they won't be doing it for the rest of the region. So these are some of the questions that are out there. We're trying to get answers for. As soon as we know, we'll update the board. So thank you all for your discussion. We appreciate it.
Okay, so we'll move on to item six, superintendent's report.
Well, I've been talking a lot, so I'm going to, I want to really focus on the curriculum, both special ed education as well as general education for our district in this time, especially if people are watching. So they understand what phases we've gone through, where we're at right now, how things are going, some of the issues and some of the questions that we're getting. And then we'll go through those and then I'll come back and sort of hopefully follow up with some construction updates. And then also some of our plans for the end of the year at least. Tony, Kelly?
Absolutely. So just a quick recap. As you recall, we're in our eighth day of initial instruction using two platforms, our Google Classroom and our Microsoft Teams. Prior to that, we spent a week, what was our our spring break? And our teachers working to put together their lessons and prepare for that time period to which we went live last Monday, or two Mondays ago. Our educators took off running and learning, developing their their lessons, our principals and administrators stepping up. You know, I'm dropping some name dropping just briefly because I think it's important, the work that Tiffany Matnilbrook and Dave Myatt have been doing in the professional learning and supporting of our teachers and administrators. It's just been amazing in the work. Still addressing issues as they come up and assisting our our teachers and TAs and anybody else involved in the process. And how to best clear our students and our families. Administrators working on the cultural aspect and the social emotional and working to figure out what students need to be connected with, talking with the teachers and working with their staff. To date, I think we have just over seven hundred laptops that have been deployed for these purposes. We had four days of deployment. We have another day on Friday. Bill and his team just working with Mike Coghlan to ensure proper precautions for this pickup and delivery system. The delivery system has just been amazing work by those teams. My librarian's also assisted amongst other staff members. We have helped us set up for both teachers and our our students and parents just to figure out how this all works and who they can connect with the to get answers and figure out this process. Again, teachers and principals have been taking a lot of those questions and fielding them and working with families across the district this unique time. We'll continue to have those professional learning opportunities. We're working on another one to do advanced features in some of these platforms as we know that the extension happened. And what that outlook might look like for the rest of the school year, we'll continue to do a professional learning and support our staff and and students and what they need to get done. Next phases, including looking at grading practices. It's been a hot topic across the state, across the nation. How do we handle grading in this time? What does that look like? We have, we've gone out to our department chairs once. We've gone out a second time, providing some feedback what we should do and what their thoughts are. Our school counselors have been in contact with colleges and really connecting what what that looks like and how we, what do we do with transcripts? Where we looked at what our marking period grades, how we interpret those and make sure that we're going to do what's best for our kiddos. So that decision comes early next week as department chairs are doing one last screening. We thought it was important, we get their initial thought process and then allow them to work within this environment for two weeks and really get some thought about what's what's the reality of the situation and then provide a second feedback time for our teachers to weigh in through their chairs. So that comes next, early next week, working with Chris and Linda and Ron, especially for those credit bearing courses and for transcripts purposes. Linda Thomas being the department chair for the high school counselors. So that's a big topic coming up on the horizon. Next, oh, by the way, we are reaching out. Tom's been reaching out with super superintendents and superintendents of other BOCs to figure out what what they're doing and see what some best practices are and also looking professional organizations and what they tell us about grading. As far as the other topics we would be covering is the the tech connectivity. We started with an initial just broad span to figure out who is connected and who wasn't. We've opened up our network through our our buildings so that buildings now, parking lots can be, someone can pull up in second grab and go. You can come in, connect with a district laptop or your own laptop, get what you need from Microsoft Teams or Google, and then go back home to work if you don't have internet connectivity at home. We're also looking at bus. We have, we have nine buses that are outfitted with internet hotspots, and how do we effectively use those in key areas around the district? So that'll be that next phase of what that looks like, as well as hard copies, the equivalency of the work that we're doing through the platforms, mirroring that in a hard copy or even flash drive technology to assist students that might not have that connectivity or having issues with connectivity. So that is also a process we are working through, actually, these last two days, and hopefully we'll have that put into place for for next week. So that's where we are as far as current steps and what's next up in our planning. Kelly, why don't you just talk briefly about some of the related service providers and that work? Because that looks very different in this atmosphere, and I think it's important everybody hears that.
Sure, I would echo what Tony said from all aspects of our organization. Everyone has worked tirelessly. And that includes the students and the parents to get everyone up on board going and having some positive learning experiences as we've waited through this the past couple of weeks. It was a massive undertaking to get four thousand students up and running and learning from home, whether it be online or paper. Special education has its own unique set of challenges. And we recognize that. And I think the nice thing about when we built the plan was that we actually built the plan with our special education population in mind. Trying to take into account reading levels of multiple different people. They may be with caretakers. They may be with siblings. You know, in a vast array of people that are helping them learn, the students that we're teaching may not be able to read. So coming up with technology supports so that the kids can learn the best they can in this environment. As Tony said, unique challenges for related service providers in particular as we embark on what's called teletherapy. So teletherapy for our OTs, PTs, speech and social workers could be anything from, you know, sending materials home via paper or online, checking in with families with emails and phone calls. They may be doing checking in with families with emails and phone calls, they may be doing audio therapy. They might be doing a combination of video and audio therapy through Zoom. They also are connected to the classrooms, so if they want to give some type of support to the entire classroom, they can. Or they can pull students out into their own, um, virtual classroom. Some complications arise, um, you know, a group like this, if you had a, uh, group of students that you were trying to provide therapy for, imagine the complications for being a therapist or a staff member in the home of five or six children. Uh, so there have been some things that we've had to work through with regards to confidentiality and the teletherapy, but they have worked tirelessly to get themselves up and running and supporting the students um, and the teachers, and I think they at this point are continuing to get support on that technology and are doing a nice job embracing this different type of learning platform.
Thanks, Kelly.
Thank you, Tony and Kelly. I was planning on showing you some pictures of the construction. I can't get them to come up, so I apologize for that. Um, construction is an essential business in, in New York State. The schools are exempt, so we have been moving forward. Uh, this time so that you know, um, the foundation for the library is pretty much done. They're working on possibly getting the flooring in. They are doing the, the electrical right now to pour the floor and they're going to pour the floor before they start putting up the iron, which is due at the end of the next, somewhere between middle to end of next May. And then you'll be starting to see, uh, the erection, the erecting of the scaffolding and the, sort of the shell of the hallway and the library in general. Uh, in the cafeteria, you'll be seeing some of the same things with sort of the, the atrium roof, sort of the rounding roof that will go in. They're actually doing the roof right now and they've got the loading dock foundation and the new addition foundation that is in closing that courtyard done. Uh, they have the elevator shafts already built up to the deck, so they've ordered the elevator. Uh, and that's all in regards to trying to make sure those elevators are set so when they tear down the link. If by chance school was ever informed that, um, we are not returning this year, they will immediately move to demoing the link at this point so that you know, so that they can get, get started on that foundation work. On the exterior, the field is pretty much outlined at this point. They're doing all their draining and they're starting the construction of the outbuildings out there, uh, at this point with the foundation grade. And if you look at the parking lot, it looks a mess. Uh, but everything that's a mess is also going, once, once they know school is closed, they will remove and we will shut down the whole property. And then they will start also doing the excavation of the parking lot as well. So because all of those are up, as well as the science rooms are now being reassembled and the bathrooms in the science wing, the new science wing are now being, uh, demoed. What happens is, we've got to try to get all of that ready for September. So that's what really precipitates that all of our construction, even if we weren't labeled essential because of safety and security, would still have to continue. So they are moving, uh, we have our weekly meetings. I, I take daily trips to every building. Uh, we just had something left over from, uh, the Phase One project at Gardner Road in the parking lot to put in a new drainage swale uh, in the front where we were experiencing some problems. They did that in roughly, I think, a day and a half. Uh, and then we have more to come in the elementary phase on that to correct the other side. So that's where we are right now. I think, you know, our biggest focus in the school, even around that construction, is no matter what, one way or another, there's going to be a graduation. Whether it's just with the students or students and just two guests or their parents, uh, we don't know, but we will be working on that. Um, I've got a meeting coming up where I'll be bringing in Taylor to tell her some of our thoughts and hear some of their thoughts. Uh, but we've got to be very careful and that it has to be, if possible, before June thirtieth. And the reason being is some of our students will ship out to the military uh, a- a- as soon as July one. And that even poses some problems with if we ever tried to do a prom. Uh, right now, the senior junior prom is scheduled for May thirtieth. I'm going to probably be talking to at least move that off towards the end of June. But once we get past June, the issue is not every student will be available. And that's one of the things we've got to keep in mind, so we'll talk to the students about what's reasonable and where's a finish date. After today, and I know this will come as a surprise because we're being broadcast live, but because we have not started modified sports and right now we're closed at least until the fifteenth, I will be making the, uh, decision of removing the modified schedule for the rest of the season. We're trying to hold out as much as we can for JV and varsity. But supposedly the state is supposed to make a determination by the twenty-seventh. So that's where we are. Uh, we're going to try to do everything we can for the kids, especially our seniors at the end of the year. The juniors, I understand, but right now the seniors will have to be our priority as at least the juniors still have one more year to try to get those special events in. So if there's any questions I can have or things that you should want me to think about, uh, I'd like to hear from the board at this point and then we'll move forward as swiftly as possible.
Any additional comments?
Just FYI on the sports, I saw section eight and section nine have already announced no sports. They've canceled their whole season.
Yeah, what's, what's interesting that, Lauren, I had a conversation with NISP's executive director and I sit on the State Athletic Committee for superintendents. I'm, I'm more disappointed that they passed it down to the local sections to decide. It should be a statewide decision and really what we recommended is if you cancel the season, leave whether or not the schools do something at the end up to us. But don't leave it to the sections. I mean, it's gotta be a unified position because now all of a sudden, one section does and one section doesn't. It sort of pits one school against the other, a leadership team against the other. Leadership i- is needed in this time and even though, uh, I, I have to commend Governor Cuomo. Hey, if somebody doesn't like what we're doing, blame me. Uh, I, I have to say the same thing. We are going to have to make some hard decisions. And I know the board will have my back, but I'll make that decision and try to communicate it to the board and to everybody else is, is decently and humanely and with caringness as I can. But we have to worry about health, safety, most importantly, our, our community secondly, and our seniors to try to at least make them feel as special as they are special to us and this community. So that's what we'll do, but I appreciate that, Warren. I just, you know, I, I would just hope everybody understands, this shouldn't be left up to a few to make the decision. It should be left up to the districts if, if the state isn't going to.
Taylor, did you have a comment?
Uh, yeah, um, I just wanted to say, I was actually, I think that there must have been some confusion because I and a few other people that I've heard from actually thought that sports were already canceled, so that's, I know that we don't know what will happen, but that's, uh, I guess good to hear, um. I think it was like a news source came out and said that other sections had canceled and it kind of implied that we were, but.
The, that is, that is good that you point that out, Taylor, because by having one voice make it, then everybody knows it. But right now it just, i- i- it sort of fosters that confusion. It's like, I know with the superintendents today, we talked a- and I was vocal about it, but I said, leave it to us. If I can get a chance to maybe do something with Elmira or Corning, or even if I can't do something with them, if I can do a blue white game for our varsity so that our seniors have that one event, we would try to, but it's gotta be before graduation. That's the big thing. A- and that's where we would try to work with our coaches. Our coaches are sort of stymied because they, they only had one week that they actually were coaching this year. We would have to ensure safety and security and that's the big thing. So I commend the students for thinking that, but the, the commitment from the board and us is we're going to try to do what we can as best we can and safely as possible.
Anyone else? Christine?
Um, just a comment regarding graduation. So I have seen that, um, there have been schools in Pennsylvania that have already announced graduations being postponed until end of July or even into August. Um, would we consider doing something like that? Um, if we, just, just to try to get to the situation where potentially it could be open to guests for the students or even more, more people.
Yeah, the hard part about that, Christine, is like I said, we have to look at the whole student body and once we have kids going off to the military, they aren't going to be able to come back. So I think we have to really look at, look at this and, I mean, we may have to, I, I, I'm not trying to violate public order, but I would have to try to look like what the, uh, Air Force Academy did to try to minimize and, and do something with our student body if we can. But by postponing it and that's even, some of the superintendents have said they want to do that, but then the discussion took place. How do you justify to the parents that their kids have to go away? That it's okay to honor those, but not their own kids. So that's where I think we have to say, okay, blame me, but I'm going to try to do what's best for all, not just what's as convenient. Uh, no matter what we do, we're going to try to make it very special one way or another. It might be totally different than any graduation you would ever see. Um, but that's where the creativity, I think of the students are and the parents will have to understand. I want, I want at least parents there, but I can't even guarantee that I'm going to have spectators. Uh, but I will make sure that no matter what, they have a memory for their lifetime.
Anyone else?
Okay.
Okay. Onto item seven, president's report, just a couple of quick things. Uh, first of all, uh, Sue and others, the board's feedback was incredibly positive about the recent technology newsletter. Um, rich with information, um, lots of great stuff in there and we know that a lot of people had a hand in it. So, um, kudos to all of you for getting that information in everyone's hands uh, in a timely way and completely thoroughly so that, uh, online learning could continue. Um, last month, as you know, we talked about music in our schools month. So in the last week's update, I was really pleased to see the, um, intermediate school music student challenge that they did. And, uh, what a fabulous participation from the students, what incredible leadership and creativity from the teacher um, to get that all pulled together and out on YouTube. So kudos to all of them as well. Okay, so we'll move on to seven point oh-three, the policy committee.
Okay, uh, we met on April fourteenth, uh, via Zoom. And, um, we discussed policies twenty-two fifty and twenty-two seventy, board committees and school attorneys respectively. They are on the agenda for our first reading tonight. Um, we also, um, table discussion last board meeting and, uh, last committee meeting on the fourteenth, uh, discussion of policy ninety-two seventy point one substitutes. Um, we wanted to make sure all of our teacher board members were here to give input on this, uh, policy and so as a committee, we thought it would be best, uh, to hear from all of them. And the issue on ninety-two seventy, uh, on the substitute teachers is, um, a, a self-imposed, uh, requirement that a uncertified, it's at the, it's at the end of the first paragraph of the policy, um, that uncertified substitute teachers may be approved for employment as long as they have been graduated from high school for at least four years and met the following qualifications. Um, as I understand it, and Caitlin and, or Tony, I say this wrong, if you'll help me. Um, we've got student teachers that are in their third year of their program that we cannot accept as substitutes, um, in the district because of the self-imposed, um, requirement that we have in our policy. So there was some discussion as to whether we should modify that to allow student teachers to come in or, or what we should do about that. So we were looking for, um, input from all board members, particularly our teacher board members in terms of what their thoughts were on that.
There you go.
Yeah, um, I'm sure you realize this is a important issue for me and you also remember that I usually vote no when there is someone on the substitute list that is a, um, non-degreed individual. So I put a few words together, if you'll give me a minute here. Um, I know it's the district's policy when there is a need for a substitute to place a certified degreed person in a classroom first, followed by a college degree person, not necessarily certified. And then the last choice would be the non-degreed individual. I also know that there has recently been a shortage of substitutes, not only in our own district, but others as well. I have read the current policy, uh, some nine-two-seven oh-point-one and given it really a lot of thought, especially regarding the current minimal qualifications for a person who has been graduated from high school for at least four years. I'd like to talk first about, uh, qualification number two, uh, that they have completed at least two years of post-secondary education. I find this to be very vague. What kind of post-secondary education is being referred to? What is the area or areas of studies? And number three, where it states that they have a minimum of twelve college credits. Again, I find that vague. Twelve credits usually would amount to four, three-hour courses or three, four-hour courses, but there's no mention of what the study is. And number four, I want to preface this, preface my concerns for this item by saying I have nothing but the highest regard for members of the military, their families, as well as those who have served, currently serving, or those who may decide to pursue a career in the military. I sincerely thank them for their service, for their sacrifice. However, I do not see how a military career prepares a person to substitute teach in a children's class. I believe the situation we are currently experiencing with COVID-nineteen has enlightened many on what teaching is all about. There is a lot more to planning, deliver of information, assessment, interaction with students and expertise than any, excuse me, that many individuals have ever truly understood. We have an amazing staff of teachers at every level in this district and I am extremely proud to represent them on the board. They have completed four years of study and education, completed a master's degree, unless they're a very new teacher who is probably working on their master's degree, along with multiple hours of professional development studies. I feel by saying that anyone with a high school plus education could go into a classroom to deliver a day of instruction to children, be it pre-K all the way through high school, is demeaning to our professional staff and I feel is unacceptable. Although I am sure our teachers would provide excellent plans for the day, there's so much more to delivery of instruction. Classroom management, for example, a prime factor of a good teacher. It can make or break the day. Have these substitute candidates had any experience in this particular skill? I would be especially concerned with those classrooms of children with special needs. Having been in the classroom for thirty-four years, I know what it is like to have had a poorly qualified substitute. The children have lost that day of instruction. And the following day, upon the return of the regular teacher, it may mean reteaching, correcting errors that have been made and spending time returning to an established classroom routine. What do these qualifications say to our community? I will now address number one. I would be able to expect, excuse me, to accept condition one only if these were the only available people to substitute that day. Completing an associate's degree shows that a course of study was followed and was successfully completed, rather than perhaps just random selection of coursework. and was successfully completed, rather than perhaps just random selection of coursework. My concerns, as stated, are only in the best interest of our current teachers, but importantly, the children of our district. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Uh, you didn't disappoint at all. I was hoping you had looked it over and had given some thought to it, which of course you have. Um, what are your, what are your thoughts on the four-year requirement of separation from, um, high school graduation till they can substitute in our classrooms?
Absolutely. Even an extension of that would make me even a happier person.
Okay.
You know, I just, I just see, you know, this, the possible scenario of, you know, I graduated four years ago and, you know, now I'm on the substitute list. And that gets around the community, it's kind of like, what? You know, how, how does this happen? And I know how hard the teachers in the district with four years of college, master's degree. And, you know, I see them doing this, all these professional development, um, studies that are offered to them through the district, the district, taking the time to do that after a full day of work. And it just seems to me that allowing somebody with such little education in education just isn't right.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Uh, was there anyone else on the board that wanted to address either the four-year requirement or anything else in this policy? And then I think with that input, we would take it back to the Policy Committee for further deliberations.
Uh, I would be curious, Mary Ann, cuz I've thought about this and I think I might be willing to compromise if somebody that had gone through student teaching was on the list. They haven't done their four years, but at least they're better trained than somebody that didn't go through it. So I, I might be willing to say if they've gone through a program like that and they're not out four years, at least they're better trained than somebody else.
I, I can agree with that. I mean, you know my connection with the university. And I can think of students who I've worked with that are in their, you know, they're in their senior year of, uh, ready to student teach. And certainly they have gone through the coursework that would give them a better, much better preparation for being in the classroom, especially with classroom management. So with, in that respect, I would be willing to say, okay.
Okay, yeah, and that's what Mr. Conklin was kinda saying at our meeting he was struggling with. And we, we have another great teacher on our board, so we thought, let's make sure everyone on the board is heard on this before the Policy Committee comes down with something, uh, or recommendation.
I thank you for giving us the time to, uh, to voice our opinion on that. Thank you.
Well, um, I'm sure you would have voiced your opinion most strenuously if we had done something, uh, you did not appreciate with substitute policy, so.
Well, you know.
Can I have a vote for Mary Ann to be on Policy Committee next year?
This, this is very dear to my heart, and I'm sure it is with Warren, well, it's with all of you. Anybody that's working on this board is, you know, it's what, what we're here for. We're here for the teachers, we're here for the kids. And, uh, I guess, you know, the time spent in the classroom, times when I've come back, and I know this is a personal thing, with having a really inadequate, inappropriate substitute in my room. Uh, it, you know, it's just, it really comes to my heart. And, um, classroom management, and, and I will say it this way too, and be very open, uh, dealing with children and discipline from when I started way back. And, and now, I mean, I, when I retired in oh-four, I was still substituting. And it's very different, and it's very hard to deal with because, um, you have to be so careful, so very, very careful about what you say and what you do with children. And, uh, I think people who do not have some type of background in study of what is appropriate and what is not can lead to some very difficult situations.
Thank you. Um, if there's no other, uh, comments or questions about 9270, uh, point one, then that's the end of my report.
Great. Thanks, Doug.
And I'd be happy to be on, on policy, just don't put me on finance.
All right, we will move on to, uh, item eight, Finance Items for Action. And we have in front of us 8.02 through 8.17 for your approval. I need a motion.
Second.
All right, Stolo, if we can remind everybody, once you do get to voting, to make sure they unmute their mics and say aye, and then raise their name for whichever part you called to.
Yep. All right, so any questions or comments, 8.02 through 8.17? Doug?
Um, as a BOSIS employee, I would like to abstain on 8.07 Budget Transfers Report as there are BOSIS expenditures contained, um, in that document.
Thank you. Anyone else? Questions, comments? Okay, as a reminder, you'll unmute yourself and raise your hand according with your vote. So all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Nay? Any additional abstentions beyond Doug on 8.07?
Same.
Okay, thank you. Onto item nine, Personnel Items for Action. We have in front of us 9.02 through 9.04. Need a motion.
So moved.
We need a second?
Mary Ann, you would have to unmute yourself.
Or Shayla, you would too.
Second.
Okay. Uh, any questions or comments, 9.02 through 9.04?
Um, I'll have to abstain on 9.03 cuz I get dental care through the system.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none. All those in favor say and raise your hand, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay?
Nay.
Any additional abstentions? Okay, on to item 10, Miscellaneous Items for Action. We have in front of us 10.02 through 10.04. I need a motion.
Brian Lynch is coming in.
There he is. Hi, Brian.
Yes, I am here. Thank you.
So we are on item 10. I need a motion, 10.02 through 10.04.
So moved.
Okay, questions or comments? Doug?
Um, as a BOSIS employee, uh, with my salary, um, and benefits located in the budget, administrative budget on 10.04, it's a direct conflict of interest for me to vote on that item, so I will abstain. And also as the 10.03, the BOSIS board, uh, is my boss at BOSIS, I will also abstain on that item as well.
Thank you, Doug. Anyone else?
May I ask a question, Doug? On the BOSIS board, um, there are four positions, but there's three people, uh, running. Do they have a write-in procedure as well?
Um, the advice we received from the New York State School Boards Association Legal Counsel is that the write-in process does not appear in the statute that governs BOSIS elections. Um, so therefore, it's not a mechanism that can be used.
Okay, I did not know. So I, I know I had questions earlier today from, uh, someone, so, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, 10.02 through 10.04, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay? Any additional abstentions? Okay, next up, on to, uh, item 11. We have in front of us for approval 11.01 through 11.03. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay? Any abstentions? Okay, on to item 12, first reading. We have 12.01 and 12.02. Are there any questions or comments on those? All right, hearing none. Onto item 13, any additional board member comments?
This is personal for me. Where do I take my computer to get fixed so I can use my laptop?
Nancy will be calling you tomorrow, Warren. Anybody else? Just send an email to Nancy, we'll come out, pick them up, reimagine them and get them fixed.
Thank you.
Christine? Um, I just wanna say, I just wanna thank everybody in the district, um, this, all the work that's been done. Communications have been great, coordination, collaboration, um, having, having kids that are taking online classes and right now with their teachers. Um, the communication from the teachers and the, and the coordination to both the, the students and the parents just have been phenomenal. Um, and I, I know this is very difficult. It's outside of everybody's kind of their, their box, um, right now. And, and I think, um, everybody's just doing a great job and just trying to do what's best for, for the students and for the community. Um, and then just all, all the outreach with the community as well, as far as providing the foods and, and, and things like that. So, um, I know it takes an army, and I just wanted to just publicly say thank you, um, as a board member and as a parent. Um, it's just been, it's been phenomenal. So thank you.
Thanks, Mary Ann. You have to unmute, Mary Ann.
There we go. Um, I won't take the time to repeat what Christine so beautifully said because it's absolutely true. Everybody is just going above and beyond, and we are so fortunate. And, um, just thank you to all of you. Bravo.
Thanks, Mary Ann. Other comments? Dan? You have to unmute Dan. There you go.
Yep, no, I, I got it. I just echo those same comments, the only, and, and feel exactly the same way. The only thing I would add is as well, and, um, you know, kind of to what Taylor alluded to, I, I just think obviously this is a difficult time for everyone, but particularly our students and our seniors. And, um, I, I think what's been, I've seen now the, the, on social media, starting to recognize some of the senior athletes. And I know that students put work into that. I think that's great. And, uh, uh, you know, I just applaud everyone for their efforts to try to make the best out of a, of a just unprecedented situation. So thanks to everyone in the district for that.
Thanks, Dan. Uh, the other thing I would encourage you to read is Tess Sights, uh, wrote an article for the Star Gazette about what it's like being a senior athlete in these times. Um, incredible writing, uh, very insightful, eloquent, and we should all be proud of, um, another one of our students kind of putting themselves out there and telling their story in these times. She did a really nice job. And Taylor, thank you for joining us. I know you were unable to join us last time, and it's so nice to see you, and we appreciate you being with us as well.
Yeah, of course. Thank you guys for having me. It was great.
Other comments?
Mrs. Stolo, I'll just wrap up, uh, if nobody else has any other comments, so I'll wait for a second. Anybody else? Seeing how this is a virtual meeting, one of the things I'd still like to remind the public as they've seen the meeting, this will be, uh, posted on our website as well as, uh, we've livestreamed this. But if the public has any comments or questions, we will get back to you within 24 hours. All you have to do is dial 795-5601, extension 4201. That is the superintendent's office, and we will look into the questions, concerns, or assistance that you're requiring, and we will get back to you. So we want to thank everybody for at least allowing us this opportunity to do this remotely and be safe. But yet, we also wanted to be as transparent as possible in our discussions, and we hope this has helped. So thank you all, and thank you to the Board of Education, as well as my whole team, my whole staff. Today's Administrative Professionals Day, and you can't really do much right now. Uh, can't even send flowers, not that I'd send flowers to Nancy, but I'd get her some lunch, that's for sure, right, Nancy?
Thank you, Nancy.
All, all of yous are wonderful, and you know, being a captain of a ship is always the best when you have an outstanding crew. Uh, and I have one on every level. So thank you very much to everybody and the board's support as well as the communities.
So I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay? Any abstentions? And Bill, thank you very much for all of your efforts this evening and, and doing all this remote work with us. We appreciate it. All right, good night, everyone.
Live TV broadcast, so everybody's free to go, and we're still on regular board time of 7:30. Great job, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye, everyone.
Bye.